Meeting to order, please.
So far they don't have to.
How you doing?
Yes, I'm here.
Whenever you're ready.
Yes.
I got a mosquito bite on my ankle.
Okay.
Did I just get it?
Verimus?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Palomsky?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Conquest?
Here.
Vito absent Mulliner?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Twelve present, one absent, one vacancy.
Twelve present, one absent, one vacant. We have a quorum, item 1.2. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we still, excuse me, we still.
All right, I want to read the following. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, Mayor of the City of Elmhurst has determined that an in-person meeting for the July 6, 2021 City Council meeting may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the aldermen of the City Council participating in the July 6 City Council meeting, wherever their physical location, shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and we can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. We have no aldermen who are participating remotely, although we will have some participation perhaps for public comment. Any announcements from the dais? All right, there being none, we'll move on to item 3.1, Presentation of Ryan Company's Development Proposal. I want to say before we get started that this was supposed to be the prelude to an item later on the agenda that was a resolution that I had advanced for consideration by the council. In the last hours, I will say today, I've had conversations with several aldermen and there seems to be a bit of confusion and concern about how we're proceeding. So I will tell you now that my intent is to proceed with the presentation, to remove the item from the agenda for this evening and to bring it back in a couple of weeks. I also just want to explain, not for debate, but just for background and consideration when it does come on the agenda, that we have a technical issue to allow Ryan to proceed just with filing an application. The letter of intent is a non-binding letter. It creates no legal rights in the applicant and it would be for the council to then talk about a contract within 45 days or the letter of intent could be extended. But there has been concern expressed about how it ties into the process and deal with the fact that the city owns this parcel of property. So I want to make sure that I have a chance to speak with various aldermen and then you have the opportunity to speak with each other. I certainly didn't want to create any perception that we're trying to rush this through. So with that, I will go on with the presentation and the purpose therefore is not to then debate the presentation, but to hear it and I expect it to be largely the same one that was presented to DPZ Committee. So with that, who's present from Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Brett Bunkie. I'm Director of Architecture for Ryan Companies. So I'm the architect and I lead the design team and I'll present our DPZ package here for you this evening. So our site is located at the corner of Haven and First Avenue. So it's that red shaded area. Right now, there's an existing condominium building on the site as well as a open parking lot and a one-story commercial building on the corner of First and Haven. If you could advance, please. This is the current zoning map. As you see, our project lies within the CBOC and CBOCR zoning district and right across the street to the east is a residential R2 and residential R4. Next, please. And these are just some site photographs of the existing conditions. The two photographs on the top are of the parking lot that belongs to Elmhurst Clinic with the condo building in the background. The image to the right of that, again, you'll see the existing condo building in the background and the parking lot in the foreground. And the bottom two images are taken at First and Haven with the one-story commercial building and the associated parking lot. Next, please. This is the current site plan. We have revised this scheme since we first shown it to the community and in the next few slides, you'll be able to see a side-by-side comparison. But this is the site plan. That white block is a six-story portion of residential units and to the east are two smaller four-story portions of the building facing the residential portion along Haven. And then down at the corner, at the intersection, it's five stories with an outdoor patio up on that sixth floor. And in the center is the amenity courtyard. It will be hardscaped, landscaped. There'll be a pool as well. And to the north of that is a smaller courtyard. A little further north, please, between those two yellow, or I'm sorry, those two gray boxes. Next, please. So this is an aerial view of the revised scheme. So you'll see First and Haven in the foreground. So the building is six stories, which is the lighter colored portion and the five and four-story portions clad in masonry facing the residential neighborhood to the east. So as you see, we're trying to step down. Behind, in the background, you'll see the existing nine-story building and as we approach towards the east, we step down from that six stories to five stories into that four stories. And then obviously, we have the two-story podium with the amenity decks. Next, please. So this is a side-by-side comparison of our original scheme, which is on the left, where we had a majority of the massing running parallel with Haven and a good majority of that six stories lies within 100-foot setback from the property line because we are in the CBOCR. Part of the zoning requires four stories maximum within that 100 feet. So the image on the left is our revised scheme where we tried to push a majority of that six stories beyond the 100-foot setback. So only a portion of that northern leg, about 35 and 1/2 feet, falls within that 100-foot setback. And the following slides are just some floor plans of the overall building. So on the left is the ground floor, which is primarily parking. The dark gray to the north is parking for the clinic. As I stated previously, there was a surface lot to the south that was part of Edward Elmhurst Parking. So we've incorporated their parking into the garage in the north half. And the lighter gray to the south is parking for the apartments. And then obviously, at the corner, that purple shaded area is the lobby and entry point into the building with some back-of-house spaces. So loading and parking garage entry will be along First Street as well as a small drop-off for deliveries and ride-sharing. You'll also notice that we eliminated several existing curb cuts that are along Haven. Obviously, we've kept just the one to the north which connects to the existing Edward Elmhurst parking lot. And then the image to the right is the second-floor parking, which is all, again, dedicated to the apartments. So this is parked at a ratio of 1.25 parking stalls per unit, which meets the zoning requirement. Next, please. These are just some typical floor plans. The image on the left is the first floor of residential units with the amenity courtyards. As you'll see, there's some amenity space directly off the amenity courtyard and then there's a mixture of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three-bedroom units throughout the floor plans. Next, please. And then this is just the upper floor of five and six. As you'll see, the image on the right is the top floor where that purple shaded area is a small amenity space with an outdoor amenity deck. Next, please. Again, this is a side-by-side comparison of our previous scheme that we showed the community at the beginning of May. That image is on the left. As you'll see, we have, again, a majority of that mass, six-story mass, within that 100-foot setback along Haven. And the revised scheme to the right, where a majority of that mass was pushed to the west and we flipped the amenity courtyard facing west to now facing east. Next, please. And this is just a perspective, standing at the corner of Haven and First Avenue, looking back at the building. The image on the left, again, you can see where a small portion in this view was along Haven and the revised one on the right showing that mass pushed back away from Haven. And this is a view from the north end of Haven. You'll see the EEH Surface Parking Lot in the foreground and our proposed building in the background. So again, image on the left was the previous scheme. Image on the right, where we took much of that mass on the sixth floor and pushed it back. And then this is another aerial view where you actually see the west facade facing the existing 711 and surface parking lot. So we've tried to break up this mass by articulating the balconies and alternating the material, both a light and a light gray and a mid-gray color palette, whereas a majority of the masonry is along the entire base of the building and a majority of it facing the residential street along Haven with two brick tones, a red color and a dark charcoal color along the base. Next, please. And this is just a close-up perspective at the building entry into the lobby. So this is, again, at Haven and First Avenue. So that ground floor will be a lot of glazing sun canopies to identify the entry point into the building. But as you see here, a large majority of masonry at the pedestrian level and at that corner. Next, please. And these next series of slides are just the elevations of each side of the building. So at the top, we have the south elevation where you see a majority of the masonry at the corner. The bottom image is the east elevation facing Haven, where again, we have that strong masonry base, two colors of brick with the five and four-story masses clad completely in brick and then the mass beyond clad in fiber cement panel as well as balconies giving further articulation and breaking up that mass. Next, please. And then these last two elevations, again, the top one is the north elevation and the bottom one, the west elevation. And this is just the last slide, again, comparing those two aerial views. So previously, we had about 204 units. We did decrease the gross square footage slightly. So now this current scheme, we're at about 330,000 gross square feet. As I stated, parking ratio is about 1.25 per unit and we're within the FAR. I think per zoning, the FAR is 4.0 and we're proposing 2.88 FAR. So that concludes the presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, thank you. I'll ask members of the council if you have any questions about the presentation, not the resolution, which will be for a later date. Any questions? All right, thank you for the presentation this evening. We'll pick it up at a later meeting. Appreciate your time. We'll move on to item four on the agenda, Receipt of Written Communications from the Public. Is there anyone present who has a written communication they would like to deliver to the council? There being none, we'll move on to item 5.1, Public Forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any issue they so desire. Clerk Tamer has.
Yes, Mayor. First is Claude Pogwach.
Mr. Pogwach.
My name is Claude Pogwach, 566 Oars Gladys. It's been a while since I've been here. It's been a few years the first time I came here. So many aldermen are still around. To start out, I'd like to thank all of you that ran for office and do hold office. Takes you away from your families. But the council used to be different. There used to be members that questioned the agenda, not just accept it. Very few people that are aldermen challenge it anymore. I don't understand why. You're 14 individuals, 14 different backgrounds. It's just like you waste a lot of time on zoning. Alls you gotta do is look at Addison. Four-story building is now six and a six is an eight and a four-story garage is now six. We just had a presentation about another development. It's gonna follow the zoning of the city, right? And it's gonna follow the building codes, right? Then why did an alderman have to ask about a masonry surface on the eight-story? It cost residents. Why? You got a building department, you have to look at a set of drawings. Engineers do not waste their time designing a structure that'll carry aluminum when in fact, it's gonna have to carry masonry. I lived in that world. There's no questions from the alderman on anything. There was an article in the paper about the excavation at York High School. Yes, there was. There was also a statement in this council that there was an agreement between the educational system and the city. One of the aldermen asked Public Works, what's this gonna cost? Publicly said, I don't know. And let alone you as aldermen, not knowing, other than the fact you might have a deal, what it was gonna cost the public, but you voted it in. And yes, they're excavating a hole. Do you still know what it cost? Do any of you know what it cost? It's beneficial. Won't debate the point.
Mr. Pogwach, your three minutes are up, so please wrap up.
So I would ask the aldermen, you're 14 diverse people, let alone you ask very few questions and don't vote on zoning anymore. You change it so often, nobody knows what the rules are.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Is there another?
John Dulles.
Good evening. I'm sure many of you know me. I'm very outspoken. Many of you don't like me, but I don't care. I love my town. I'm here about the parking on Addison. My business is, I'm second generation, 63 years on Addison Street, 128 North Addison. I'm proud to be a second-generation owner, but I'm not proud of our city council and our mayor, former Mayor Morley, and the parking on Addison. When we have Formula Fitness, I'm gonna tell you a story of what happened to me over the weekend, on Saturday. I put a sign in my window. I've had many signs in my window, political signs, but I also criticize Fitness Formula. I said in this sign criticizing Fitness Formula, I said, "Fitness Formula is a big corporate entity that has corrupted our city hall and our police department." And I put that sign up. It hit a nerve. Someone saw it, called Fitness Formula Corporate and it happened to be a lady customer mine for years who worked at Fitness Formula, comes over with a letter from Fitness Formula's corporate lawyer. She comes into my store Saturday morning, plops this piece of paper down on my counter and she said, "This is from Formula Fitness Corporate Lawyer and I can't come back here anymore as your customer." So the coward Gail, the owner of Fitness Formula, had his employee, who was a customer of mine for years, bring this piece of paper to me from their corporate lawyer. And the letter said to me, "John Dulles, cease and desist of having that piece of paper, that sign on the window saying about my business. It hurt my business and I will sue you if you keep that piece of paper on the window." Then about an hour later, who comes in my store? Gail, the owner of Fitness Formula. Never met the guy before. Comes in my store. He says, "I'm Gail, I'm owner of Fitness Formula. Take that sign down immediately or I will sue you." I says, "I'm not taking it down." I said, "First of all, I don't know if you're Gail. I don't know if you're the owner. I've never met you before." I said, "But that letter is not gonna intimidate me from your lawyer." I said to him, I said, "If you are the owner of Fitness Formula, you have gotten a $14 million garage for free five years ago. You came to Elmhurst, you wanted to build your health club here. You told the City of Elmhurst, 'I wanna build my health club here, but you have no parking on the street. Build me a garage and I will come here,'" after you guys turned down LA Fitness and they moved to York Road." So Gail at Fitness Formula got a $14 million garage for free. Not only was Gail not happy with the $14--
Mr. Dulles.
Wait a minute.
I'm waiting a minute.
Okay.
You're at three minutes, so just want to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Okay. Mr. Gail, owner of Fitness Formula, said to me, "Well, I pay taxes here." I says, "Well, we all pay taxes here." I says, "You take up nine, you're not happy with the $14 million garage we built you for free, but you're taking up 98% of the street parking." I says, "Everybody else that wants to park on Addison and that wants to go to the other 40 or 50 businesses on Addison parks in front of my store because that's the only three spots left open. So I have to fight for parking on Addison for everybody else on the street. I'm this self-appointed long ranger for parking on Addison. It's not fair, ladies and gentlemen. You are public servants, from the mayor on down, to serve all the businesses on Addison, not just Fitness Formula, okay? They take 98% of the street--
Mr. Dulles.
Wait a minute, Mayor.
No.
Mayor, wait a minute.
No, you wait a minute, please.
No.
You've had your four minutes.
I get to speak here. That microphone's being paid by us.
We're moving on.
No, we're not moving on.
Who's next on the agenda?
Listen, you're gonna listen to me because the parking, I've been a business owner in 63 years in Elmhurst, 63 years. You don't treat, disrespect business owners.
I'm not disrespecting you, sir. You're disrespecting the council.
No, I'm not disrespecting the council. I'm talking to the council. You guys work for us. We don't work for you. You work for us, all of you, from the mayor on down.
Please.
I'm here to talk about the parking that I'm fighting for, not only for Dulles Cleaners, but 40 or 50 other businesses on Addison. Every single day, there are 98% are taken by the health club, which we, there's 639 parking spots in that garage that we built for them.
Mr. Dulles, your message has been received.
All these people are taking up the parking. Listen, Mayor, you're just a new mayor. You're not the boss here. We're the bosses here. We're the bosses here.
I'm asking to have you removed.
No, you're not gonna remove me. This is not a Gestapo here.
No.
This is not the Gestapo. You work for us. We get to speak as long as, we pay for these microphones and this building belongs to the taxpayer, not you.
You've got 10 seconds to--
No, I got, I'll speak as long as I feel like it. I feel like it. I'm talking about parking that is, you're discriminating-- I'm talking about parking that, that is, you're discriminating against-